Okay, hold on. Welcome to the, uh...
Microphone, please.
Board of Council Board B, January 25th. January 25th. Uh, first will be... We'll take a cold order and then we'll do a roll call. So it's through the roll call.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mr. Panarello.
Here.
Mr. Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Zabada.
Here.
Mrs. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Dieroff.
Present.
Mr. Hemingway.
Here.
Mrs. Hogan.
Present.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
All present.
Okay, now, now if you have the pledge of allegiance, in a moment of silence, please.
You should, um, probably...
Yeah, we should do anything back. This one, this one.
Yes, the first one. Public comment. Anybody who can now?
Yeah, we did official for public comment one. Okay, so we cut public comment number one.
Start with those first.
Yeah. I'm going to start with those who previously signed up first, then we'll go to those who signed up at the door. Uh, first, Nicole Zeltz.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Zeltz. I live in, uh, Colberg, Colbergdale Township. Lots to unpack, to unpack from last week's meeting. It was a long meeting. A lot was said. A lot of misinformation was shared from people on this board. A lot of falsehoods that obviously did not do research, nor did they put any information from credible sources. Things that were said were, "Tell me masks are keeping the virus down. It's not possible." It is possible, and proven by data. PA, the PA court decided masks are unconstitutional. Who are we to step on the Constitution? Again, it was corrected by the solicitor last week. The PA court did not find that masks were unconstitutional. Kids are not coming in contact with sick people. I've no idea what that even means. Obviously, they do. No other business shuts down when they have, when they are short-staffed or have a few people out sick. Right before I came to the meeting last week, I stopped to get a coffee at Starbucks. They had a sign on the counter, "Closed due to staff shortness." Also, where I take my watch to get done, they're closed two days a week till further notice because they have short-staffed. So that's obviously not true. We've been told, "If we get a shot, wear a mask, you will not get COVID." That's not true. We were told it helps reduce your chances of getting COVID, not that you would not get COVID. Teachers are not teaching to their potential. I have no idea why a person on this board would say something to that about teachers. It's uncalled for and wrong. Teachers are teaching to their fullest potential. They've gotten the shot, and then gotten a booster, then gotten a booster, and then gotten a booster. There's only one booster right now, so we don't have three boosters, so that's obviously wrong and misinformation. Masks are useless, according to the CDC. I searched the CDC's website. Did not see the word "useless" when it comes to masks on its site. What it does say, "Masking is a critical public health tool for preventing the spread of COVID-19." And it's important to remember that any mask is better than no mask. Doesn't sound like they're useless to me. I want to congratulate those who voted "no" to the health and safety plan as it was presented. I'm assuming that you all have your degrees in mental health, uh, in communicable disease, in epidemiology, because you're not relying on the data by the experts. Obviously, I'm being sarcastic. When you voted "no," you had no plan to present to the superintendent. You looked like a deer in headlights. And then a board member pulled the number out of the air with no time or data to support it. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker. Next speaker, Cassandra Rooney.
Good evening once again. Got my shirt on for y'all since you enjoyed it so much last week. You're gonna read it again today in case you forgot what it says. But, um, thank you to the five of you that actually have a backbone to save our children from this madness. I just want to say thank you. I sent it over email. I'll say it to your faces. Thank you for being the strength that our children need to get through this mess. Okay? It's sad that there's four of you that still, um, believe that this mitigation effort does a single thing to help them. Okay. So I'm gonna reread the esser verbiage last week because after I read it, apparently because four of you don't listen to anyone that speaks, um, you didn't hear it. Lord only knows if you read it from the website either, but it says, "Each LEA must create a health and safety plan that addresses how it will maintain health and safety of students, educators, and other staff, and which will serve as local guidelines for instructional and non-instructional school activities during the period of LEAs, ARP/ESER grant. The health and safety plan should be tailored to the unique needs of the LEA and its schools, and must take into account public comment related to the development of and subsequent revisions of the health and safety plan." Okay. So I know you guys got a copy of COVID-19 Recommendations for Promoting School Safety and Reducing Viral Transmission that came out from Berks County. Not gonna read it to you because I'm sure you all have a copy, but I just want to mention, the word "recommended" is stated six times in these two pages. The word "guidelines" is stated four times in these two pages. There is zero mentions of the word "law" and zero mentions of the word "mandate." Just want to make that clear when you're reading this and thinking that you should be making our children pay the price for what you guys want. Okay? So I don't really have much more to share, but I'll speak in comment section number two as well.
Next, Donna Yusavich.
Donna Yusavich from Upper Frederick Township. After watching the finance committee meeting last week and sending you the following information via email but not getting an acknowledgement, I'd like to share some of my tenure experience on this topic publicly, especially since seven of you are either only halfway through your first term or just starting it. Based on the presentation made to the board, you have very little information so far upon which to decide on the resolution to stay within the adjusted Act I index. I saw some information about inflation, but you should be asking for projections on what that will mean to the budget for utilities, wages, and other budget items. I saw nothing mentioned about the state budget and its impact. Usually, not much is known at this point, but there may be some indicators based on legislative leanings. This tends to be the biggest unknown and often only becomes known just prior to passing the final budget in June. I saw a list of goals, a great list of goals, like not cutting programs, but you should be asking the CFO what confidence they have that they can satisfy all those goals and stay within the adjusted Act I index. You should be asking the CFO what the biggest unknowns and risks are. You should be asking what happens if you cannot balance the budget by staying within the adjusted Act I index. Would you take from savings? Note that the dollars in your savings accounts are very limited by law and can have severe long-term impacts. You should be educating yourselves about that right now. You should ask for and seek to understand five-year budget projections, the assumptions behind them, and how your savings accounts might fare. You should understand what the exceptions are, what you might need them for, how much you could use, and what they might mean to the tax rate. Special education exceptions, for example, are there because the state understands that special ed needs are skyrocketing at a rate way above our allowable tax increase rate. You should be, you should understand the finance process if you adopt the resolution versus if you don't. This was not explained at the meeting. Basically, adopting this resolution in January allows you to simplify the budgeting process by reducing the number of public review steps and the number of state reporting steps. And the con is that it ties your hands and might force you into a less-than-optimal financial action. Historically, the board has usually...
Thirty seconds, please.
...not adopted the resolution to stay within the adjusted Act I index because there were too many unknowns. You can still keep the tax increase at or below the adjusted Act I index even if you don't pass this resolution. This is a very complex budgeting process. I can't overstate that. So I urge you to be strategic and vote "no" on the Act I resolution tonight while you continue to gather data and educate yourself on the budget issues. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight.
Next, Wanda Merkel.
Good evening. I'm Wanda Merkel from Gilbertsville. Good evening. As a concerned parent and faculty member of Boyertown Area School District, I'm commenting on why we should keep masks mandatory. As a parent, I am very happy that the current plan has been working for more than half of the school year. With that in mind, I can assure you that if we make masks optional, we will be virtual within two weeks. Have you forgotten what happened at the beginning of the school year when the seventh graders from East had to go virtual due to positive cases and exposure? What will happen if we start losing more teachers? Are parents gonna come in and sub? The subs that we do have are reading specialists, interventions, and special area teachers. They should not have to sacrifice their position to fill in and sub when a teacher is out due to COVID, nor should our students be split and put into a classroom of over thirty students when a teacher is out. How are we to social distance in those classrooms with masks being optional? Putting that added stress on our students and teachers is not beneficial at all, especially when we are returning to normalcy, routine, and being more consistent within our schools. My concern as a faculty member has to do with the decline of our students' mental health. For the past two years, I have watched and become, I have watched children become depressed, have anxiety, and lose hope from being socially oppressed from school and other school events. Our students were and still are lacking social and emotional skills. Last year, though, when we returned with the mask mandate, the students started becoming themselves again. They were happy, interacting more in class, and smiling because, yes, you can even see a smile behind a mask. The inconsistency of the back and forth of masks is draining for everyone, including parents, but more so for our students and our teachers. So I ask you, why would you want to take that away from them again? Is it just to please the parents who are against masks, or is it to do just what you want to do? In the end, the only ones who are truly getting hurt by all of this are our students. Do what's best for our students. Keep, keep masks mandatory. Thank you.
Next, John Dobbs.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, John Dobbs, Gilbertsville. I stand here before you not to complain about all the injustices that have been done to my children, three of which who are healthy and not allowed in school no longer, not because they're bad students, not because they misbehave, not because they're not in programs like ROTC and benefit the community, but because they won't wear a mask. Not gonna complain about the constantly closing schools, the inadequate transportation, the unchallenging curriculum that are not creating free thinkers but blind followers to orders. Not gonna complain about forced masking our beautiful kids. If what everything you claim here was true about masks, everyone in Florida would be dead. I ensure you they're not, and they're thriving. This is a message to parents who still care about their kids and want to have a choice. The parents who work nine to five all through the night in hopes they can give their kids a better life. My wife and I know because we are one of them. Hoping that the people you entrust to turn your children into the self-sufficient, morally-strong leaders of tomorrow are doing just that. From one parent to another, and whatever side of the aisle you're standing on, I am here to tell you that this fight for our children's right to not be masked when they are healthy and not to keep schools open was a true blessing in disguise. This is no swipe at teachers, but the system within they are forced to navigate and should stand up to. My wife and I are active with our children. We teach them to help those less fortunate and to always stand up for what is right. We also sit with them and do their homework and review. The blessing from this two years was not the ability to force people to wear masks and equate it to the greatest generation serving in World War II as some members of the board have done in some grandiose, delusional reason on their decisions of masking. The true blessing was getting to see how badly the public school system is failing our children academically while teaching moral relativism with no true right or wrong. Why stand before you today to implore you to follow your parental instincts and look at what your children are being taught? What a generation ago would be an embarrassment is now hailed as the new progressive model. It is easy to be progressive as changing is, in fact, progress. However, we need to go back to what has worked and stop experimenting on our children. Have grades that are tied to scores. Don't cancel midterms. Hold children accountable. Feel free to state morality is not relative. If a child is sick and afford them the opportunity to stay home, but if they are not, allow them the freedom from masking their beautiful faces and focus on nothing but educating our children. Dana and I will continue to support this community as they struggle to hold this district to a higher standard, but we fully, we are fully pleased that our children will no longer be attending Boyertown School District as of this Friday and have been enrolled in Coventry Christian School. Look at your options. There are many, not just private schools. And if you are here, we're here for you to help, but really take a look at what your kids are learning and what they're being put through through this circus. Thank you.
God bless you.
Thank you. God bless you.
Next, Debbie Stapleton.
Hello. My name is Debbie Stapleton, and I'm a citizen of Region One in Colbergdale Township. I'm here tonight to speak in reference to the health and safety plan. I'm going to speak quickly as I have a lot to say, so buckle up. I'm here to say that a mask optional. Before you roll your eyes and tune me out, listen to what I have to say. I feel there's so much division between select board members and the parents that you shut down when someone's opinion differs from yours. Please start listening to the parents. Mask-favorable parents have had their opportunity to make this work, and in my opinion, it is not working. We have mandatory yet masking, yet we have all these positive cases of COVID in addition to all the talk of shutting down. If our incidence rate is high, don't you think there's a great deal of natural immunity going on? We're not allowing kids into school merely because they sat next to someone? Do you ever recall shutting down schools for high incident rates of the flu? I surely don't. In the past, I believe there were times when principals sat down with parents and had a coffee chat session to talk things out. Is it possible for this school board to have an open forum to actually speak civilly with parents and not conduct business during this time period so as not to violate sunshine laws? These three-minute sessions just don't seem to be getting anything other than division accomplished. Are you listening with an open mind as to what people are saying? It's no wonder people are frustrated and are being removed from meetings. At the last board meeting, there were many audible dings on phones for texts coming in and all the mouse clicking going on when people were speaking. Could we please silence all technology and focus on the speaker? Are you truly giving your undivided attention to said speaker? It's time to start listening to us. All we want is a chance to parent our children as we choose. Mask optional gives both parents, both options to parents to do as they want with their children. We need to increase the positive percentage rate to have more kids in school, get rid of contact tracing, give the students more than fifteen minutes to eat lunch so they may return to eating as civilized people and not like the barbarians they have become and inhale their food so they may eat it all within the allotted timeframe. Many throw their food away, and then they are hungry the rest of the day. How are they focusing on education? I've been running my business mask optional for two years. We all get along, and we have not had a breakout problem with COVID. Give the parents credit for being able to make right decisions. The board has become so shut off to parents who don't hold the same thought processes as themselves, and there's a bit of a bullying attitude going on here. It's on tape. Watch it. Is it anyone, any parents call out from the audience? I regret that you don't take, I also request you don't take me to tasks on social media as many of you present do. No wonder there's so much division. Where does it end? Two weeks to flatten the curve, two years later, we're here. Seventeen days to wear the mask, four months later, we're here. It's time to return to a normal life, and I would like to respectfully request that this be submitted to the minutes of the meeting. Thank you.
Jennifer Thompson. Is there Jennifer Thompson in the back, in the back room maybe?
Yes, sir. Let me check back with Ray to see if he's still there.
Okay, I'll go into the next one person and then come back to her. Everybody think she's back there?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening. Um, my name's Jennifer Thompson. I live in New Hanover Township. I'm here tonight because I was angry at the selective listening that occurred last week at the meeting. The district received over sixty comments in favor of the new health and safety plan, which was six times more than the comments asking you to reject it. But five of you did not listen. You made a decision based on your own personal agenda. The way you came up with the number twelve is a gambling number. That belongs at a casino, not on a school board. You are not health, health experts. It is time to listen to all constituents and the administration because they have spent countless hours educating themselves on the ever-changing guidelines in order to keep our students and teachers safe. After five of you rejected the health and safety plan, one of you told Mrs. Torsha not to take it personally. Of course she took it personally. How couldn't she? I have three kids in the district. One is at BASH, one is at GES. Thanks to the current health and safety plan, I'm able to go to my son's basketball games and watch him in person. That did not happen last year. My fourth grader is able to attend peep in person. He's able to attend Reading Olympics. I received paperwork last month to register my youngest for kindergarten, but I have not registered her yet because I cannot trust the majority of you. At the high school, there's a sign that says, "The prom is on May sixth." That is the priority. Keep these kids in school. North Allegheny, Allegheny parents filed a lawsuit recently on behalf of one thousand students with disabilities after the district went mask optional, stating it violates Americans with Disabilities Act. The federal judge ordered North Allegheny School District to reinstate the mask mandate. The federal law prohibits the exclusion of students with disabilities from public education. What the court said was there has been no change other than the COVID-19 infection rates getting higher, so there was no comprehension as to why the district decided to go optional masking in the middle of the surge from Omicron. Just a couple of days ago, Perkyomen Valley did the same exact thing. If you don't know what the section, what section 504 of the Rehab, Rehabilitation Act is or the Americans with Disabilities Act, then you should not be on the board. I have been a teacher for fifteen years. No one likes these things, no one. But the priority is keeping kids in school. Thank you, Mrs. Torsha, for helping keep our kids in school. Thank you to the four of you who also are trusting her to keep our kids in school. Thank you.
Barbara Furman.
Barb Furman, Gilbertsville. Since early in the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, I have asked for a reasoned discussion if the pros and cons of mask-wearing for children. Not a discussion with one person whispering down the lane, an adult back and forth with parents and other stakeholders. It would be best if we could take the masks off and talk to each other as neighbors, which we are. The people that attend these meetings care. The people that voted care. The adults here are all reasonable people that wouldn't be here if we were ill, but that discussion never happened. Instead, last week, one board member asked the superintendent if she knew of any child, children that have been adversely affected by masking, and the reply from the superintendent was, "Not that I am aware." That answer, insight, makes no sense to me. There have obviously been countless emails and incidents at school that can be documented. As an educator, I look, I can look at the face of students and tell if they are sad or happy, but we have taken away so many learning opportunities, hiding their smiles and frowns. Teachers may be trying to make the best of a less-than-ideal school policy, but no awareness of adverse effects. Do students wear uniforms? Should we put that in place? No. Their only uniform and most important lesson is proper mask-wearing. I was a health and PE teacher. I can tell you the value of proper dress for physical activity, but that has gone the wayside. But you must wear a cloth mask properly inside, even though many have admitted that they very well don't stop disease transmission. The many people that voted in November twenty-twenty-one voted for parental rights and freedom of choice. Most don't attend, don't want to attend meetings. They elected you. And those that were not on the ballot were directed by the will of your constituents. You represent voters...
Thirty seconds.
...and must now listen to "we, the people." At this point, it's not going to be easy. But giving parents choice is a start. No judgment. Admin leadership with clear protocols for illness detection and bringing back a trust between educators and all parents. No judgment for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to Section Four, Approval of Meeting Minutes. Approve the, the approval of the January eleventh twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two Committee of Meeting the Whole Minutes. Do we have a roll in that?
You're up, Liz.
I was signed, signed up to speak, and I got confirmation email that...
Group one or group two?
I mean, I, I got the confirmation from Sandy. Wouldn't that be group one? Marissa? Marissa Schwartz, yes? I'm sorry, but I, I do have you on my list.
She's on, she's on for public... She's on, she's on for public, she's on for...
But isn't public too when you come and sign up? Wait.
Oh, yes. Marissa Schwartz, yeah.
Thank you.
Your ignorance continues to fail this district week after week. You were asked last meeting if you had any knowledge that masks were impeding learning and your response was, "I'm sure there's some data. There's, you know, nothing that's been brought to my attention." All the elementary school students that went to summer school, were they not brought to your attention? What about the masses of kids held back? You didn't hear about those kids? What about all the behavioral issues this year your schools have been facing? What about the PACE survey, PSSAs? You haven't seen any of those results? Do you have the numbers of kids unenrolled just days before school started when you pulled the rug from underneath us? All those kids struggle to learn while in a mask. Do you recall the emails and testimonials from parents and even some students bringing to your attention the trouble they were having with masking? My son's situation was brought to your attention last year when I told you the mask was not only harming his health, but was a reason for him being a whole grade level behind. He's been out of your district all year now, still digging himself out of a hole that was created under your plan, but he's finally thriving. I thank God every day I'm fortunate enough to give him the education he deserves. Families are flocking to Coventry Christian Schools because the lack of their learning that comes from your district is being sent home for 10 days when you are well with nothing but Google Classroom not impeding their learning? Is sitting in an auditorium all day with no guided instruction, a sufficient education to you? If it is, please resign now. Teachers and staff worried about a mask falling below the nose, constantly reminding and interrupting students all...
Schwartz, could you please put your mask back up?
Teachers and staff worried about a mask falling below the nose and constantly interrupting students all day. Sounds like a learning hindrance to me. Watching you all meeting after meeting, pat yourself on the back, acting like your plan was some sort of great accomplishment is distasteful when so much of this district is in shambles. Why can't you just acknowledge the mess your plan was instead of doubling down on something that has failed terribly up until this point? How many days of school have been missed? What is an acceptable number? Do you, you need to publicly apologize to every student struggling and every parent painfully watching their child struggle every day? Your ignorance is irresponsible and proves you need to get back to be an educator instead of some COVID mitigation officer. Your health and safety plan and lack of plans have been a disaster. It's time for you to take a route of normalcy and consistency, put your egos aside, and make masking optional and stop tracing. Parents and staff should trust their science and their masks will protect them just fine. No more baby steps. You've carefully tallied the feedback on the new plan, but I want to remind you what the community voted for in November. A whole lot more than just the majority voted for parental choice, the Constitution, and freedom.
Now move this, now we'll move again, we'll move to approval of the January 11, 2022 Committee of Holding Meeting Minutes. Can I have a motion?
Wait a second.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we also get, also like to move to the approval of the January 18, 2022 Finance Committee Meeting Minutes. Could I have a motion?
Hogan motions.
Dieroff second.
Roll call.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now turn this over to Superintendent Torsa.
Thank you, Mr. Brophy. At this time, I would ask for Benjamin Fetterman and Kyle Harrington to step to the microphone.
Good evening. I'm Ben Fetterman and this is Kyle Harrington and we're here on behalf of the BASH Tech Ed Department. Equality Public Education... Oh, my bad. Equality Public Education is a, is a key that can open doors of opportunity for many students. Providing that education takes a team of committed people, from educators and staff to parents and administrators. The nine members of your local school board are an important part of this team, making informed decisions that direct the course of our public schools. Every January, we take time to celebrate and recognize the challenging and vital work they do on behalf of our students, families, and community.
Um, as a token of our appreciation, we present these laser engraved and hand-toed leather luggage tags. They were made by Mr. Vale's Advanced Materials Engineering Class. The students developed the design with a coral draw, a universal laser, and a leather working tools. We thank you, the board members, for being everyday heroes and making our students' success their priority.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you to, you know, for both, for everything. Thank you.
To continue on, um, sitting in front of each of you on behalf of the Foundation for Boyer Town Education and the Boyer Town Area School District Administration, we'd like to present to each of you, school board members, in appreciation for the voluntary work that you do, the Yeti tumbler that is set before you with the snacks in it. So the foundation had provided the tumblers and so we just wanted to share together our appreciation for the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we're going to move right on to Senior Spotlight. And who do we have here, Ms., Dr. Foley? Okay. All right. Perfect. So tonight, we're going to recognize Brooke Meredith, not Brooke. Okay. Then we, Kylie?
Yep.
All right. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump right down to that we're going to recognize Kylie, but we'll come back to Brooke. Kylie Ari, and she has been recommended by her teacher, Mrs. Foster. And these are the things that Mrs. Foster has to, to share. I have known Kylie for the past four years and she is nothing short of amazing. Kylie works so hard at everything she does, all with positive attitude. Kylie has a goal of becoming a registered nurse and with her caring heart and compassionate soul, I'm confident she will achieve her dream. I will miss seeing her at BASH, but wish her all the success she deserves for her future. So congratulations, Kylie. And Hunter? Okay. Next, we have Hunter Thomas. And the teacher that has recommended you is Mrs. Rothenberger. And Mrs. Rothenberger has to say, "I first met Hunter as a ninth grader when he took conversational German. This year, he is taking German 1 as a senior. He decided to take this class purely because of his enjoyment and interest in learning more about German. He already has his world language and other graduation requirements fulfilled. Hunter works hard and puts in extra time when he needs to. He enriches our class by sharing German music that he listens to in his free time and asking about vocabulary words that he finds outside of class. I'm glad Hunter made the choice to continue his study of German." Congratulations, Hunter. Not with us this evening, these, another student that's being recognized is Brooke Meredith. And she is being recognized by Mrs. Farabaugh. "This is my second year working with Brooke and I can say that this is a student with a strong desire and determination to do well in all aspects of school. What is most impressive is the resiliency and exponential growth that I have witnessed this school year when it comes to Brooke achieving personal goals. We are unbelievably proud of Brooke as a student and a young adult." Congratulations, Brooke. And... Lastly, we'd like to recognize Mackenzie Johnny. And the teacher that is recognizing Mackenzie is Mrs. Smarecki. Mackenzie is a member of National Honor Society. Many of you may recognize her as one of the constants at the COVID clinics where she served as Mrs. Moore's right-hand, registering and directing people to get their vaccine and booster. Her team designed one of the winning rooms for St. Mary's Shelter in Reading. Mackenzie brought a group of teens together to make hot chocolate bombs for her grandparents' church. And as if that isn't enough, she is a fantastic softball player and has already committed to Penn State College. So congratulations to all of you and enjoy the rest of your senior year. Congratulations. Next, we have the Student Representative Report.
All right. Good evening, Board and Community members. I'm glad to be present today with all of you to go over important matters in a respectful and courteous way. Today's report will be relatively short due to the rescheduling of student activities to protect the student body as best we can as the number of cases rise based on the BASD dashboard and decreased student participation.
Perfect. First, I would like to address the Student Leader Luncheon. To avoid a student gathering in the classroom where those individuals would be unmasked while eating and the added challenge of rescheduling with midterms, Sarah, Dr. Foley, and I decided to wait until early February to host another luncheon. We want to apologize for the delay, but look forward to the upcoming event. Also, the Student Council has decided to reschedule their annual mini-thon event to later in the year so students can enjoy an event outside. Based on the Olympics theme for this event, it would be better to have it held in the Memorial Stadium. More information will be coming on that in the upcoming months.
In addition, Brianna Wood and I are involved in the Students of the Year Program through Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. The Students of the Year Program is a seven-week fundraising competition where students across the country work to raise as much money as possible for the fight against blood cancer. Over the next five weeks, stress-down days will be occurring in all elementary schools, middle schools, and the high school. This information can be found in the Let's Talk Tuesdays. I want to take a second to thank the community for getting involved in this campaign and helping Team Boyer Town Legacy get to our goal of $50,000.
Also, we would like to wish the girls and boys' basketball teams good luck tonight as they face off against Springford and then Methacton later this week. On Saturday, January 29, Boys' Varsity Wrestling will host a match at the Bear Gym where they will recognize their senior wrestlers. We wish all winter athletes good luck with the remainder of their season.
Also, Olivia and I would like to take a second to recognize our school board members in this meeting for Board Recognition Month. Throughout my last year and a half, I've learned so much about the importance of this board and the role it plays in the community. Thank you for being honest, vulnerable, and persevering through difficult times. Olivia and I appreciate the opportunity we have to be with you every month and look forward to moving through the second half of our school year with you all. Thank you for your time and attention. We look forward to the remainder of the meeting and have a great night.
So at our last board meeting, I know that I received feedback from many of the board members and I have compiled it to, just to get clarification as to which direction we wish to go. So as you know, the universal and correct wearing of mask is a requirement of the plan. And in this column, it was what the board or the administration was recommending with regard to wearing masks until we would move out of high. And board feedback that we received was to follow CDC recommendations as far as the wording. Mask recommended, mask recommended, but optional. Face mask may be worn by individual choice. Mask optional, or masks remain until transmission rate is moderate. So I just want to get clarification from the board as we're all sitting here with what we're all comfortable with moving forward. I know that, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Mr. Panarello, but one of your suggestions was to utilize the CDC's guidance, which is saying that masks are recommended, but it kind of, you know, that's their recommendation. So I'll let you speak to that.
Essentially, you could word it as mask recommended, mask highly recommended. We're not taking masks off anyone. The truth is, most people are probably going to leave their mask on if they want it. It just gives the opportunity for those who don't feel comfortable with the mask to remove the masks.
Is there anyone that would be uncomfortable with me using that language? Mrs. Hogan.
Thank you, Mrs. Torsa. Yes, I would be uncomfortable with that because the CDC and other, you know, doctors, whatever, all the science is clear that the ma, my mask protects you, your mask protects me. I'm going to ask the community to please be quiet while I speak. Thank you. So I would be very uncomfortable with that. And I think also, you know, with the issue happening in Perk Valley and, it's Perk Valley, yeah. And in Allegheny County with, you know, medically fragile people and people with disabilities, the ADA is pretty, I mean, it seems pretty clear to me, I'm not a lawyer nor am I a judge, but that, again, I'm going to ask the community to please be quiet. So, yeah, I, I think that it puts medically fragile people at risk and that it doesn't do the job of, of, if only one person is masking, the other people, forgive me. What I'm trying to say is if everyone is not masking, then the protection is just not there.
Mrs. Torsa, quick question. Are you looking for like a vote from each one of those as to, you know, how many people want?
That would probably be the best way to move forward with that language. I believe...
So let the conversation end.
Yeah.
Then we'll move on to, to the vote.
I had talked to Mrs. Torsa late this afternoon because I had some questions and some concerns. And by all means, I am not going back on my mask optional. I'm just trying to come up with something. And Mrs. Torsa and I were talking that we can still give mask optional, but help, I guess, more in the transition from room to room type thing. So I was still recommending mask optional, but possibly when we're out in the hallways, especially at like the high school, the middle school, that we go to wearing a mask because we are closer in contact. I still want to keep the mask optional, people. Trust me, I do. But maybe while the numbers are still a little high, we can at least be a little bit more concerned about the other people in the hallways. Wear a mask for those three minutes that you're out in the hallway, five minutes, whatever it is. When you come back into your classroom and you don't want the mask on, you're sitting down, mask comes off. I'm trying to do some compromising, people.
We've been compromising for a long...
I, I know that. I know that.
Two years.
I totally, totally understand. And if we can't compromise a little bit...
Please let, please let the members talk back and forth so we can get the, the appropriate things up on this chart.
If we can't compromise, then I will go back to totally mask optional. I'm just trying to do this because Mrs. Torsa did tell me that the numbers were coming down. What did you tell me they were? So what I'm asking, the five people that went with me last week and the four that didn't, let's leave the kids in the classroom as optional. But if they're going to be out in the hallways, moving from room to room, they're close contact. Yeah, it's only a couple of minutes, but can we at least try that to keep these numbers down? down? If not, then I'm going to go back to totally mask optional. I'm trying to do some compromising, but if we can't get a majority to go this way, then I'll just go to optional.
Okay, so you just want this added to the five that are up there now as an addition?
Well, what type of discussion?
But you wanted it up there to discuss?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Updike?
I'm not in favor of discussing that at all. I'm not going back on my mask optional is what I told Mrs. Torsia and which I've been campaigning on for the last month or two. I am not moving off anything else except for mask optional.
Mr. Zawala?
I have to agree with Mr. Updike Grove. I appreciate, Ms. Nyman, that you're trying to find a way, but the hallways actually have more ventilation in the classes.
Mr. Panerello?
Yeah, I think, I think the guidelines are 15 minutes. The kids, my kids have barely enough time to get from one room to the other sometimes. It just wouldn't make a difference. There's no point in doing it in hallways.
So this, Tom, you still want to add that or, okay, don't add that to the list then? Ms. Scott?
I was actually going to comment on Chris, but she took it off, so that's, that's fine. That's fine. No, that's.
So outside of Miss, Mrs. Hogan, with regard to Mr. Panerello's recommendation is that we use the, the language from the CDC where they're saying recommended, but it's not mandated, it's recommended. Is, is that the, the level of comfort from the majority of the board that was not interested? Mrs. Scott?
I, I prefer the mask recommended, but optional, I just think it's clearer. It's, it's just a clearer communication than just mask recommended.
When I had made my proposal, I put in the beginning that we should follow any mandates from any particular, from the Department of Health, from Pennsylvania Department of Health, to Burke County Department of Health, to the state, to the federal government, the Pennsylvania Education Association. We don't have a Department of Health in, in Berks County. But basically, if it's not a mandate, we would basically stay with what we're going to put tonight into our health and safety plan.
Ms. Nyman?
I think I'm going to go with the mask. Well, first of all, what are you saying recommended means? I guess I want your definition since you're going to be the one having to comply with this. By recommended, what are you saying?
Let Mr. Panerello speak to that.
It's essentially the same one you see at every store you walk into where it says masks, masks, masks were highly recommended and everyone walks in with a mask on or they don't. It's not a mandate. It's implied that it's optional, it's only recommended. Otherwise, it would say no entry without a mask. Right? That's, it's, it's pretty clear, I think.
Because some people say when it's recommended, they want you to wear them when you come in. That's why I'm, I'm hesitant on that.
Can you ask Mr. Shultag?
Mr. Shultag, could you give us a quick rundown?
I believe a recommendation does not qualify as a mandate. I think, I think that's clear.
Okay, I think I would still want to go mask recommended, but optional.
Do you like to, to poll the board to find out what the majority would prefer?
Yeah, I think at this point in time, I just don't, I, I would imagine you want to go section by section on this. Is that, is that how you want to go forward with it so you get the right information?
That, that would be.
Okay, at that point in time, pull, pull the board as to which are the, which are the statements they would like into the, into the plan.
No, this is something that I have right here.
Could you, Ms. Torsia, could you just, that's making it better, or just go over them once again?
Thank you. So, so what we're looking for is masks recommended per CDC guidelines or masks recommended, but optional? That it would be these two.
Okay, can we do a roll call now, please?
Ms. Dieroff? Mr. Zawada?
Masks recommended, but optional.
Mr. Panerello?
Masks recommended, I believe it's implied.
I have a question just for clarification.
We're voting, aren't we? Yeah, we're voting.
I, I, I think I should have some respect to ask a question before I'm entitled to take a vote. Mr. Updike Grove? If you had something worthy that I would listen to.
I was, I, I was unsure, we're voting or we are polling the board? We're polling the board. Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Could you explain the difference between voting and polling, please, so that everybody
I'm not sure I understand the distinction, to be honest with you. But I believe polling is just to get a preliminary direction on the part of the board before a final decision is ultimately voted on by the board. That's my understanding.
So, so that would mean an abstention doesn't require a big explanation on paper?
No, an abstention does not require an, an explanation. And in any event, an abstention is a no in any event anyway, so.
Thank you. Yes, Ms.?
I, sorry, I apologize. Just one more clarification. So we are being asked those two choices and if we would not vote for either, we could simply say I wouldn't vote for either.
That is correct.
Okay, I appreciate it.
But have Mr. Hemingway be able to ask his question, please.
Yeah, please ask your question.
All right. My, my question is simple as this. It's obvious that the first plan was voted down. So we are here tonight to discuss as a board, creating this new plan. So if I have to be involved in creating this new plan, because obviously that's the direction that we're taking, am I being asked to, of this language, what, would I be most comfortable with?
Yes, that's, that's what I'm asking for. What, what you're most comfortable with.
That's all I wanted to clarify.
Okay, Mr. Hemingway, would you like to, to vote on it?
I would say as the original plan, the wording was recommended. And as I remember, Ms. Nyman was not comfortable with recommended, so that's why that was removed. So I'll go with what I originally was in favor of and the word recommended. So, recommended.
Mr. Brophy?
Recommended, but optional.
Ms. Nyman?
Masks recommended, but optional.
Mr. Updike Grove?
Masks recommended, but optional.
Mrs. Hogan?
I won't vote for either of those options.
Mrs. Scott?
Masks recommended, but optional.
And Ms. Dieroff?
So what, well, now we'll move on to the second section with, with the same rules in effect as to how you want to proceed? Go ahead, Mr. Panerello.
So just so everyone's clear at home and everyone here, those two things are the exact same thing. Just, I just want everyone to understand, they're the exact same thing. All right.
It's just, it's just a matter of visuals. Just a matter of visuals.
All right. So next, under the, the most feedback that I also received was under the contact tracing and combination with isolation, I'm sorry. Contact tracing in combination with isolation, quarantine, and collaboration with the state and local health departments. And the feedback that I have received is that no contact tracing, three to five days quarantine with symptoms and a positive test, contact tracing needs to go, no contact tracing in classrooms, cafeteria, and transportation. Positive tests require five-day quarantine, student returns when well and no symptoms, which is the CDC guidance, negative and no symptoms, student return. So some direction with regard to the contact tracing, is it safe to say that all members who were in, opposing the administration-recommended health and safety plan are in favor of no Reiterate, the, the new guidance that has come out from the CDC Department of Health is that if you are positive for COVID, you are to quarantine for five days. And as long as you are not symptomatic, and you may return into school or return back into, out of quarantine for days six through 10, but you're supposed to be wearing a mask. So what, what you're saying, what I'm hearing from the members of the board is that as a student is found positive within a classroom, they don't want contact tracing, the, the recommendation is not to contact trace, not to quarantine students who are otherwise healthy, sitting in the room just because they were sitting next to a student who is positive. However, if you are positive, you should remain out and follow the guidance as prescribed by the CDC and/or your doctor. Should you be symptomatic in any way, you should remain, you know, out of work, out of school, et cetera.
If anybody's getting tested, are they giving their positive and negative test results to the whoever? I don't know who it goes to.
So I understand that when, we can, we can certainly follow up with positive tests that are PCR tests. Home tests, obviously, if you're positive, you're positive, you're staying home. That's period. Negative tests, you know, unless it's a PCR test, unless it's a test that we would be able to trace back, that's the only way that we would be able to confirm the, the test result. However, you know, home tests, you know, they'd have to come in and show them and I don't believe that that would be valid.
Okay, and then one other question I did have was, are we still doing temp checks at all?
We are, we were doing temp checks as a layer part of mitigation for sporting because students that are actively engaged on, you know, the field, on the court, et cetera, they're not required to wear masks per the, when the mask order was put in place and the Department of Health gave us the directive as to when students should and shouldn't be wearing masks. So we were utilizing the temp checks as a part of the mitigation to make sure that there weren't, you know, sick kids that were participating, just to protect everyone else. So we are not doing it, you know, you know, full, like we're not walking up, down aisles in the classrooms, temp checking.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to comment because I, I do know that if you get a positive home test, you can report it, I know in Montgomery County, directly to the Health Department. And if you report it to your doctor, they report it to the Health Department as well. I have serious concerns about this. Excuse me, my computer just went off. I have serious concerns about this, given anybody in our buildings, but especially given medically fragile staff and students who are now going to have the option, the only option to attend in person would be with other people who are maskless and could infect them and they wouldn't even know if people close to them were sick. This is especially important for people who need the antibodies. I'm sorry, I can never say that word right, that big M-word, because I know that they can only be given, I believe, in the first seven days. So I think this is very, very dangerous for, especially for a certain population of our students and staff. Thank you.
You're referring to monoclonal antibodies?
So by contact tracing, we're, what we're, what I'm hearing you say, not you, Mrs. Hogan, but others, is that when confirmed, when a confirmed positive case and whether the student was last in school, the confirmed student who sits next to other students, there may be a communication out, but we're not going to require quarantine at that point as long as they're asymptomatic. So there would be communication of some sort that goes out, whether it's a general letter that says that, you know, there was a student who tested positive within your child's classroom, yeah, et cetera. So that's what I'm believing. So I guess we should just go ahead and poll unless there's other questions. So, Mr. Hemingway, what I'm asking is, are you comfortable with the no contacting tracing in classrooms, cafeteria, transportation, and then to follow the positive test requirements per the CDC?
Yeah, I've always had a problem with the contact tracing. That's what sent healthy kids home. So if there's a way that we can incorporate a plan that is more lenient in contact tracing, I think it's appropriate to let parents be aware of a case in the room, but to require. And my daughter was one from, from East that was a healthy kid that was sent home. So I've always had a problem with the contact tracing. So to answer your question, yes, that's what I would see in some direction that you would do.
Just so I understand, if there's a, if there's a positive case in the class, are the extent of our duty, I'll put it that way, is to notify the parents that there were some, that the children that were in that class, there was a positive case and that's the beginning and end of how we'll handle anything with contact tracing? Is that correct?
That would be the direction that I believe that we would need to go. I would look to other school districts who are underway with this and to get some guidance and, you know, some information with regard to how, how they're communicating.
Yeah, just want to clarify that to the board, that that's how you're, that's, that'll be the extent of any contact tracing at this point. So in effect, there is none. It'll just be the, the parents of the kids in that room will be notified.
Ms. Torsia, isn't, didn't we do that at the beginning of pandemic? I remember getting emails like that, that were kind of generic with that, let you know. Is that, didn't we do that once?
It was when, it would have been in the beginning when everybody was masked, pretty much.
Yes, Ms. Zawala?
So we are required by the Department of Health to report to the Department of Health that one student or two students that have tested positive. Other than that, we would just basically sending the letter, which is very important. I don't disagree with that. And allowing parents to let them know when they can make the decision what they feel best for their child.
Do, do people send in their tests stating that these kids are actually have COVID? Like how do, because you do have to report it, but how do we know what we're reporting is correct?
We do have the ability to get into that system. Our health, our certified school nurses are able to, to go ahead and check, to confirm. But typically, we're not questioning people who are saying they are positive. Our, our bigger question would be if we know that someone is in a family where there's a confirmed case and people may not be able to quarantine well from each other, that a student who's living in a household, that, that's where we're seeing our highest incidences of, of people coming, you know, in and getting, having COVID and it being spread is within the household, not seeing as much of that happening within our schools.
Any other questions? Can we take the poll at this point?
We're, I'm sorry, we're just, sorry about that. We are just looking at the part about no contact tracing and then just following the CDC guidance with regard to quarantine if you are a positive person with, with symptoms and becoming. becoming asymptomatic and just following the guidance, but no contact tracing. So it's no contact tracing and then following the CDC guidance on quarantine if you are positive, COVID positive. Mr. Zawada?
Yes, and basically to add to that, the student that was tested positive and they come back to school, they would be required to wear their mask for five days.
Correct. I would add, that is part of the CDC guidance, but we can spell that out.
Spell that out, please.
Okay. I'm just putting my notes here so that I have it then captured. Yep. Okay. And then a negative and no symptoms, students return.
I think it sticks to ten and sixteen.
Oh, sixty.
Sixty?
They sixty to ten.
Do a count then.
Yeah. All right. So these are things that will go into the actual plan.
Any more questions or can we begin the polling?
I just have a comment. I think, I think that's pretty stigmatizing. So basically, if you have a mask, everyone's going to know that you were COVID positive. That's stigmatizing. And also, also, I wonder about, you know, especially, not so much in elementary, because I think it's probably easier to follow, but once students are in high school and they move from class to class, I feel like that could be an issue, tracking which students have to mask and which don't, like an issue for staff is what I mean.
So basically, you're saying that's if the school, if nobody wore a mask in the school, which you're going to see people wear masks. So the people that are coming back wearing masks would probably blend in.
So actually, Mr. Zawada, I disagree because some children won't wear a mask and if they contract COVID, they'll have to return to school wearing a mask. And I think that it will obviously cause a stigma. I mean, the kids.
Which actually, right now, would happen if the kids don't want a mask the proper way, or if they're not wearing a mask, they're sent home.
Well, that's because they're not following the school health and safety plan. That's not for stigma reasons. That's not children stigmatizing children. That's, you need to follow the rules if you want to be in school.
And that's what we're putting in the health and safety plan for the five days after they're sick.
Yes, Ms. Nye.
I don't think there should be an issue here because one day a child might want to wear a mask, the next day the child might not. So I don't see a problem with a child coming back and having to wear a mask for five days. People are going to, people might one day want to wear it because they don't feel good and they're going to be.
That's what masks are?
Yeah, they're going to be cautious. I don't see some of these kids actually wanting to infect anybody. So I think that should not be an issue.
I don't know that we necessarily need to poll this. I know that what Ms. Hogan is looking for, but I would say that the other board members are comfortable with this.
Yeah, let's, let's go with the polling.
And I will elaborate. Oh, you want to go forward? Okay.
Go forward to polling.
Mrs. Scott? It's fine. Mrs. Hogan?
No, if we were universally masking, I actually would be in favor of not contact tracing, you know, obviously following the other guidelines, but no, not in this form.
Mr. Updike Grove?
Yes, I'm for the no contact tracing in the classrooms.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes, I'm good to go.
Mr. Brophy?
Positive tests require five day quarantine.
Mr. Hemingway?
I guess if I'm participating in building this plan, seems appropriate. I understand what Lisa's saying, I agree with her, but it would be, okay.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes, just the way it's written.
And Ms. Duroff?
Okay, I'll go along with it just. Thank you. And the next part was.
Can you reiterate which wording rights you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just everybody.
Yep. What I had listed there is, just so I, these are my notes, no contact tracing in classrooms, cafeteria and transportation, well, just no contact tracing, period. Positive tests require five day quarantine, we're going to keep that in there. Student returns when well and no symptoms, we'll spell that out more specifically. And negative and no symptoms, students may return if they were deemed as a contact from whatever reason, whether it's at home or whatever.
Or they would have had a COVID positive.
Right.
Once they get the negative, they can.
Correct. As long as, they still must remain out for those five days. Six through 10 is when they can return. So, okay. All right.
Next section.
All right. And then next, I did want to highlight that in the part of the plan where we talked about having some buffers in place with regard to if we have positive cases rising, we meet the percentage, et cetera, the recommendations over here by the administration was that we would have students out for seven instructional days. We did change that to move to five, which is more in line with the CDC. Oh, excuse me. However, I just wanted to note that change per the plan that we were recommending. The feedback that we received from the board is that not to go with the 5% as prescribed by DOH, but to go with 12% of individuals that are positive and then to move the building to virtual instruction for five days. So what I would like clarification on is that, do we want five days for virtual instruction, which is in line, which is in line with CDC or virtual instruction for three days? Because that was the feedback that came with the difference between days. So that's the first thing that I'd like to know. Mr. Zawada?
I'm basically, the five days, because it puts them together and a teacher can put their curriculum together.
My question is if it's, if you send them out on like a Wednesday, does the weekend count? That's your five days so they can go back on Monday? So it'd be three school days, but actually five real days?
Right.
Is that correct?
Right. So it's five days total. Anyone opposed to five days? Okay. Everyone else, all right, with the language of 12% and five days?
Can I fire it?
Yes.
I'm, I'm opposed to, I'm in agreement with the administration's plan. So their five day change is acceptable to me. I'm opposed to the 12%.
Can they work on the rigor of the, I'm sorry, I'm just saying, can we work on the rigorousness? Because that was our biggest concern when they were home, if they're going to do that five day. If you don't have a parent with them or trying to work with them, it's not, they're not getting a lot. So if they're going to do the five day, can they do something to where the kids are really kind of, because they really are like, it's like a lost five days that they're doing. I mean, I know it covers everybody's mind, but they need a little more there than what they're getting on their five day. It's hard to say they're getting education.
I would.
Mr. Dobbs, just so I can clarify, that if the school would go virtual or a classroom would go virtual, that means that everybody's virtual, so therefore the teacher would be doing synchronous instruction. Students would be on their computer and the teacher would be there as well. They just wouldn't be in the classroom. So that, it would be the same rigor that the students had, should they be in class. Okay. All right. And it's a little bit different from what was occurring when students were quarantined and I don't disagree.
We're trying to stay, just so everybody knows, we're trying to stay away from the hybrid model that did not work, did not work well, did not work well for the students, did not work well for the teachers. So that's why we would be the whole class.
And then next, under the elementary, it seems like the board was in support of the administration's recommendation, but someone had put in for three days. I think, again, that's if, maybe the question was if we went out on a Wednesday, you, then we could return back on a Monday. So it's five days, no matter when you would go out. And if weekends are there and holidays, those days count as days that you would be remote. Obviously, if it's a holiday, then you don't have to get onto your computer and have class. You would just have off on that holiday, but that day would count towards being out of the building for those five days. So I'm going to remove this one and those would be the two new placements under this portion of the plan. Mr. Zawada?
I just want to state one thing, and it gets in the record possibly, but Philadelphia School District, which is the largest school district in Pennsylvania, has since now gone to no contact tracing and no, no matrix. The only way they shut down a school to go virtual is due to staff, staffing issues only. So if they, as a liberal school district and as the biggest school district, they had over 80 schools closed by using these paths. So they realized, and they were using 10%, not the five, and they realized they couldn't get themselves down to a number that could open the schools. So it's just for knowledge for people.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brophy. I just wanted to note that Philadelphia School District is also mask mandatory and they're not a liberal school district, they are simply a school district in the state of Pennsylvania.
Ms. Scott?
I'm sorry, I think it was.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm for that class that moved virtual for five days instead of three. Thank you.
And then.
Any other comments?
So I reached out to the PA Department of Health to get clarification on the 5%. I'm still waiting for them to get back to me. In light of the Philadelphia thing, I'd like to look at it closer, since we're not going to be actually voting on this till, what's the date of that?
The eighth?
Is that the eighth?
Yes.
I think we have plenty of time to figure it out, to maybe hammer that out, because maybe it doesn't have to be anything, or maybe it should be five, I don't know. So let's look at it. And we already know the other two things. And those were the only three problems I had with the original plan anyway.
Five would be less number of.
I understand. So I just want clarification from them and I'd like to look closer at Philadelphia's plan and see how they're doing it. That's all.
Yeah, this will go up for, for public comment on the board, on the bulletin board for the next several days, for next week, I said. So yeah, you can also, as a board member, absolutely can comment the same as the public can over the next several days.
Sure.
Unless you don't want to.
Mr. Zawada?
Mr. Zawada?
I'll pass.
I believe I have direction here, Mr. Brophy. We don't need to poll. I'm sorry, Ms. Nyman.
Don't need, don't need poll. Okay, Ms. Nyman?
Okay. I'm concerned over the 12%. I think personally, it should be nothing because we've never ever shut down a school that I know of for a health reason. And we're supposed to be here for education. I think we should be open whenever possible. That's my opinion, but that's my opinion.
You do that, now we have to poll?
The reason the 12% was put in there was basically if we had a major breakout. It gave the, the school district and the administration some guidance that if we had a major breakout again or something like that, they would have the ability to shut us down and go virtual.
Mr. Hemingway?
I'd like to agree with Mr. Panarello in getting a little more research. So thank you if you, you know, keep us in touch and let us know what's going on with that. Mr. Zawada, no disrespect, but I can't, I can't participate in numbers that, I still feel that they're sort of, no backbone behind it, when the administration originally had a lot of good reason for why they have a 5%. And it's not my job to, to think it should be a certain way. It's my job to vote on what the administration already knows is the correct answer. So I'm not participating in this poll.
Okay, so at this, this point, since there's a bunch of differing opinions, how do you want to handle this at this point?
For right now, we can, obviously, the administration is recommending 5% per the Department of Health. And the reason why the percentage is so low is because they're trying to stop an outbreak and, you know, making sure that, you know, people are removed from one another and to reset. So our, we would stand with 5%. However, as Mr. Panarello has shared, if, you know, we're waiting for a different answer, we can hold off, but I can say, or go ahead and poll and find out what the majority's saying.
I'd like to get something, I'd like to get something on the bulletin board, even if it's 12% and it's going to be commented on over the next week, that would be okay. I would think that would be okay, but I'm only one vote here. So I would like to see whatever number put on there for the time being to get, to get it out on the board, to get the public comment, let the board members get back and comment on it, and that way it can be changed before the, before the next week or whatever we need to do on that. Can you put in like, it's going to sound a little silly, 5 slash 10 slash 12 or slash zero? I don't, I'm not sure if that would be understood. That's my only problem with doing something like that.
What I believe we can do is just have the recommendation, you know, are people more in favor of the 5% that's based upon the Department of Health or the higher percentage, which, you know, allows students to stay in school longer, should there be an outbreak?
Or 0%.
Or 0. Okay.
Okay. Would that work for everybody so I can go on to the bulletin board?
0% would be.
That would be, all three would be on there.
Optional then of how many? Right, okay.
Yeah, what you're saying is if we have 90% of the kids are sick, we still keep the schools open. That's when you think that. Oh, you just said no virtual. Think about what you just said. You said no virtual. You're probably right. You need to, you need to think about, when you say zero, that means nothing stops it. It continues on. Battle stations, pretty much. So if that's what you want, that's what'll go in there, but.
I'll see what we get back.
That's fine.
Just a clarification, so we're going to post it with those three different options and then ask for community feedback?
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And also working on it.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thanks. Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Zawada?
And we're always, we're also raising the number for the elementary schools.
Correct.
To be based on a percentage, it'll be based on a true number.
Right. Mr. Panarello, you're going to be looking and get back with some, some other data. That'll, that'll go directly to Ms. Torshia. Okay, thank you.
And then lastly, I just wanted to point out that we did get clarification from the state today that needs to be part of the plan. And that is that due to the inability of students in pre-K program to receive vaccination, all students and staff in pre-K will be required to wear masks. This is a requirement of the state. That's not something that we can change. That is a part of their program. So I just wanted to let you know that that was a newly added, that was not in our previous plan, so that will be noted in the plan.
I agree, 100% requirement is a lot different than, you know, guidance or recommended.
I just want to read it.
Any other board com, board member comments?
Okay, it's saying required, but that doesn't.
It is required.
Could we be quiet in the back there, please?
I think we might need to.
Calling your wife an idiot, by the way. Your wife is over here cursing at people.
I think we need to just change that a little.
So maybe you should move.
You're under control, sir. That's out of line right there.
Because to me, required's looking like we might, they might not have to.
Required is, is the language meaning that you have to wear a mask in pre-K. They're required.
I'm just concerned people are going to be confused over that. And because it's saying required, they might think, oh, it's required, but we still don't have to. saying required, they might think, oh, it's required, but we still don't have to.
What I'm discussing is the fact that we received a phone call from the state sharing that our pre-K program is separate from the rest of the K to 12 programs, and that under this pre-K program, because students in that program are under five years of age, they're four, they're not eligible for vaccines, the state is requiring that all staff and students do wear masks currently. Mr. South, you received a phone call, do you want to...
That's subject to the pre-K counts and early intervention programs that are subject to a federal mandate under a totally different authorization. So that is not subject to the traditional student issues. So that, the federal government has at least pledged to audit those issues and to deny grant funding in the event that you do not comply with those requirements.
And by denying grant funding, that would take away the pre-K program. So just, I was just sharing that information so that you were all aware that this was now in the plan. That completes the recommendations that I received.
Okay, so when will we see this up on the board?
I will take the work that we have, the information we received tonight confirmed, I will be working with my team on it, and we will shoot for Thursday to have it posted to the website.
Okay, thank you very much.
That completes the discussion on the health and safety plan, Mr. Brophy. Back to you.
Report to the president, no report. Finance reports, Treasury, Finance report?
No reports this evening.
Secretary's report?
The only item on tonight's agenda that I would like to speak to is the Act One resolution. It is placed on the itemized agenda for your approval, and what it recommends is that the district, the school board, pass a resolution indicating that they will not raise taxes above the index of 4.2%.
Mr. Zawada motions.
Dieroff, second.
Okay, roll.
Well, no, we're not going to, that's just my guy.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Go to the solicitor's report.
Solicitor's report, please?
No report.
All right, superintendent's report consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, I will be looking for approval of the BAEA Early Dismissal and Staff Development Day Agreement as presented, the Kelly Education Addendum to include nurse substitutes, the 2021-22 IDAB agreement with the BCIU, and asking for overall approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Hogan motions.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please?
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, the superintendent's report, the itemized agenda. The first item for approval is for the Act One requires the board to adopt resolutions regarding the 22-23 budget, and the resolution is attached. So we are looking for the board to approve this.
Mr. Zawada motions.
Okay, roll call vote, please?
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And next is the personnel agenda, and that the recommended action is the Board of School Directors approves the personnel agenda item as presented.
Hogan motions.
I'll second.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That completes my report, Mr. Brophy. Old business. I do not have any old business, no. Next, you have public comment period two.
Public comment period number two. On behalf of the school board and directors, I would like to welcome to this meeting, we welcome your attendance and input from stakeholders to assist us with making recommendations and decisions related to the Beardtown area school district. The procedure and rules for public participation are detailed in BSAD Board Policy 006. This document is available at this meeting and on the BSAD website. Participants properly registered on the sign-up sheet will be recognized by the presiding officer. Public comment period number two is for those persons wishing to discuss an item not appearing on tonight's agenda. Participants must preface their comments by announcement of their name, address, and group affiliation, if appropriate. All statements, inquiries, or comments shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or answer a question of board members individually, administrative team members, individually school employees, or members of the public individually. Note that we value and will not compromise the privacy of our students and staff. Please see us outside the realm of the public meeting who have a concern about the individual staff member or student. If your public comment includes a question, Mrs. Torsch or a member or staff will contact you and confirm your question, provide you with information. Comments are limited to three minutes, and comment period is limited to 30 minutes. Finally, note that we do record our board and committee meetings, and we post them on YouTube with a link to our website. We request if you do wish to take pictures or record the meeting yourself, you do so in a non-disruptive and discreet manner, and use those materials respectfully and responsibly. Okay, for period number two speakers, I have this, is there any silence?
No silence. We should talk about that.
Yeah.
As long as you're not going to exceed the 30 minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Period number one. So we'll start on number two, Nicole Zalks, please.
Good evening again, my name is Nicole Zalks, I'm a resident of Colbordale Township, and I'll also add, I am a graduate of the liberal Philadelphia School District. Tonight, I want to discuss, talk about what happened to the mural here, the No Place for Me mural here in October. Over the weekend, there was videos released of the mural being vandalized. Those files were taken from Patriot Front, which is an American nationalist, white supremacist, and neo-fascist hate group. I've also confirmed with the police of this area that they took credit for the vandalism of the mural. So I think we can rest assured that Patriot Front did vandalize the mural. The reason why I feel it's so important to talk about this and bring it to the school board, because I understand that a lot of you feel it's not a school board issue, I disagree. The reason why is because they're targeting teenagers and middle school kids. I read an article from the beginning of this month from the Philadelphia Inquirer, "White supremacists are using online video game communities and streaming platforms to approach and recruit teenagers and middle schoolers." Some entries start with jokes, or by introducing white supremacist phrases to pique a child's interest. Others share links to material that lure young gamers deeper. This is an issue, because it does affect the children here. It is obvious that this is an area that they target, that's what they do. They come in, they call it tagging, so they destroy something and tag it with their Patriot Front name. There have also been sightings of their stickers in this area, which is another way that they try to lure people in and draw attention. So again, this is an issue for this school district. If our children are being lured in by hate groups, this is an issue. And I think as a community and as a school district, that we need to come up with a way to make sure that it's not affecting the kids in this area, and they're not, and if they are being targeted, a way for them to recognize what that is, what it looks like, and how to prevent it. Thank you.
John Hemme in New Hampshire Township. I was going to speak about board behaviors, but it just came to my attention, in the hour or so that you guys were debating here, a court put a temporary injunction on Perkielmann Valley's optional mask mandate, so as of tomorrow, Perkielmann Valley is going back to mask required. That is now the second lawsuit, second successful lawsuit that has gotten a temporary injunction against optional masking. I'm not going to argue the points anymore with either you, everyone's entrenched in their positions. I'm just going to say, I hope you guys really feel like that you had a rigorous and, you know, rigorous way to put this new plan together, because sitting out here in the cheap seats, you pretty much made it up on the fly. And then you did some after-the-fact justifications by trying to pretend you were consulting with actual experts. In the three weeks since this new board has taken place, you've dealt with putting a new school board member on the board, you've dealt with rebalancing plan, and now the committee has dealt with rebalancing plan, and now you've dealt with the health and safety plan. In each case, there was a lack, complete lack of process. With the school board member plan, I know for a fact that somebody who is experienced in having seated a school board member before volunteered to help you come up with the process before the meeting, and you either ignored her or rejected her. Lack of transparency, lack of process, and really lack of any rational explanation how you came to the decisions you did. So I am not very confident that if someone in this district tries to sue under the ADA the way the other ones do, that your comportment and behavior over the last two weeks is going to really stand you in good stead. So that's just something for you to consider as you put this plan out there for people to look at. I also would say, long-term thinking, say what you want about Mrs. Torsch's plan, at least she had rational justifications for everything she wanted to put in, so if people wanted to argue with her about it, they could. A lot of the things also could have been dealt with her privately long before the meeting happened, especially as we found last week, there was a lot of stuff in the plan that you guys didn't even know was in there. And I guess she had some terrifying experience with Balzac in your youth, because the thing was only five pages long, but I guess you could read it.
30 seconds.
So, things have consequences long-term. Someday, Mrs. Torsch is going to leave, retire, whatever, and you might be tasked with getting the next superintendent. First thing a superintendent candidate is going to do is look at videos of how the board acts with its superintendent. I don't think any competent superintendent is going to look at how you've treated her the last couple of weeks and want to come here. Thank you.
Cassandra Roni, Manatoni Drive in Pottstown. Just to go off of what the guy said, those lawsuits are not final, they just put the masking order for now while they talk about it, so let's just be factual, please, instead of just making things up as we go. Anyway, I want to mention the Pine Forge situation, and how upsetting that is to me and my family. As a former Pine Forge parent, I'd take great offense to the fact that you guys are trying to staff this school with any kind of students, honestly, because my student now has a 45-minute bus ride instead of a six-minute bus ride, thanks to whoever made the decision to close the school. So my questions are, what are the estimated, are you taking this down? What are the estimated modernization costs in 2022, based on the 8.6 million that was quoted when it closed? That's an actual question. What is the current enrollment percentage for Earl and other elementaries? Because before, 84% enrollment was not enough for you. So what is it now? That is another actual question. What is the amount the school would sell for now? It was 2 million when you closed it. What is that amount now? Capital improvements were mentioned to be 1.8 million in 2019. What is that amount now? Okay? Because that is very upsetting, that I feel like we're taking advantage of the new board, because the old board isn't here to talk about how frustrating it was to close that school. But there's a lot of parents that were deeply impacted by the closing of that school. It's absolutely disgusting to me that you would consider putting special needs kids away from other kids, nonetheless, let's separate them, right? Because they're different. That doesn't even seem right. And you want to talk about opening a school and just, oh, well, we can just modernize it now. It's going to cost double what it was when you closed it. Where are these decisions coming from? All of the new board members, I'm going to ask you to look back from when they talked about closing this school, and give a real assessment of whether or not you think that our children took a hit for this district that didn't need to happen. It's disgusting.
This is you Savage.
Tony Savage, Upper Frederick Township. Why are so many people attending and expressing frustration at your board meetings? Why are so many people emailing you? I can tell you from 10 years' experience on the board that this is not the norm. Even though our community's individual concerns vary widely, there is a common thread shared by all. That is, over a very short period of time, you have conducted yourselves in a way that is perceived by many as incompetent and uncaring. Remember, perception is reality in the eyes of the people perceiving it, it's all they know. As an example, let me share the perception that the board has provided me. I have sent this board over 19 emails on seven different topics, and only three have even been acknowledged. Most of these weren't complaints, they were offers of assistance, helpful suggestions, and questions. For the Census Committee, I provided them the data from the census. I provided them a map that helped them assess the situation. I provided them the legal requirements that were used by the committee members. I shared past practices and offered a solution, and in return, I was disrespected repeatedly by the committee chair. Let's pause there. Around minute eight of the recording of January 11th Census Committee meeting that is posted on the board website, you can hear the committee chair ask me a question, then repeatedly interrupt and badger me as I attempt to answer the question, a question that seems to keep changing along the way. Then when I clarify that I was not making accusations about the topic in question, but rather suggestions, the committee says, quote, "I hope we are not going to do this. I really hope we are not going to do this." At the time, I considered it a rhetorical question, but I didn't and still don't know what this is, so let me take a shot at answering. So let me take a shot at answering. If this means offering my expertise and help to the board and the community, then yes, I will continue to do this. If this means respectfully calling the board to task in terms of acting competently and transparently, then yes, I will continue to do this. And if this means standing up for myself and clarifying myself when board members attempt to twist my words and meaning, then yes, I will continue to do this. Now, let's return to the perception you are giving to the community at large. There are many things you can do to improve this perception and increase the community's appreciation of your service. In short, you can find ways for two-way communication with the community, and you can invest time to educate yourselves. I'll come back another time and give you some suggestions for that. Thank you very much.
Yeah, please sign in the sheet so we have a record. Thank you.
Hello. I just felt that it was necessary to speak up on Mrs. Elk's comment. First off, my son's on a basketball.
Point of order, common nervous are not allowed to name community members by name.
No, she's not on the board. Is that okay?
Are not allowed to name community members by name.
Okay, so I just want to comment on the town's racist tendencies. That being said, my son is on a basketball team with every size, shape, and color. The kids played well together. Everything was great. If this is a real concern, that there's racism running through the town, which we haven't been long enough to see it. We haven't saw it. But if it is, you know what the best way to combat that is? Having the kids out there again, together, going to birthday parties, coming over. You know what my kid said when they went to Coventry? The biggest thing they came away with, besides their rigorous academics and how impressed they were? I can have kids over again. I can have friends as a community again. You know, everybody says the masks aren't doing anything, but they're driving a wedge between everybody. And I think a lot of people on this board, if it wasn't over the mask issue or keeping the schools open, could probably go to dinner and have a pretty good time. So my only comment is, if there is an issue or someone sees an issue for some couple few bad apples out there, you know, the best way to combat that is not to, you know, have a big program to combat it. It's simple. You take kids under your wing. You have role models for them. You have programs where everybody can get together. You don't lock them away in the house and have them forced to be on the computer five days a week. You know, a lot of kids in the community, their parents probably either aren't there. You know, some kids are stuck at home with no guidance, and they're probably experiencing terrible things while school's their only break. And now curricular activities get, you know, here and there. They can't get the transportation to school. So if you really want to combat poor decisions, you have to bring the community together. You have to let people to interact, touch each other, be next to each other, play sports, and not have this wedge driven of, you know, you can't go near me, or we can't go here, you know? And again, that goes to the small businesses, too. You know, I'm sure there was a lot more. Where we came from, a lot of things shut down. And I'm sure here, because of the masks, people weren't coming in, because someone had to have the mask, or they had to enforce it. So someone says, I'm not going there. Well, they're only spiting the business owner, or vice versa. And if you want to combat stupid things, like a kid writing something or defacing a moral, which is stupid, it's wrong. And it is, it is completely wrong. But you're going to combat that by having a strong community that gets along and that gets back to a little bit of family. You know, everybody focused on education. But I had a conversation today with somebody. If you don't keep the fabric of society morally guided with a base and feel like people have something worth living for, that's what you're going to get. You're going to get a generation of lost souls that don't care about anything but themselves, and no one's going to be there for them. So all I'm saying is, if you have these issues, the best way to combat this is to get back to pre-COVID, interacting again as a community, and have some normalcy for these kids, because they probably just need a hug and a little bit of guidance. That's just, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Barb Farman, New Hanover Township, Gilbertsville. And I saw tonight, the first time in a while, that the superintendent and the board actually worked together, listened to each other, and, you know, came up with some plans. And I was heartened that we could do that. And so, I didn't see animosity. I saw people trying to work together. Now, the COVID information and the masks, just so you know, I was listening to the commissioners' meeting on last Thursday, and a parent came from a school district nearby and was concerned, complained about the masking policy. And within 30 seconds of when he started talking, the solicitor said, "We don't have anything to do with the masking policy." So he, and he said, "But wait a second. The Department of Health has these policies, and you mentioned it earlier." And the solicitor said, "We have nothing to do with masking policy." So Montgomery County is distancing themselves from the masking policy. Other counties are distancing themselves from contact tracing. So really, honestly, you cannot link virus transmission to the place where you got it. Like Mrs. Torsa said, most of the transmission is happening in families. And so, if somebody calls and says, "We have, you know, my child is positive for COVID, and they haven't been in school," then it's hard to count it. So if we can do that, then it will get smaller and smaller and smaller. And by the way, your own Boyertown COVID data hub showed that in the last two days, those numbers have almost been cut in half.
Thirty seconds.
So I watched the Monco COVID website. I watched the school district. We cannot keep chasing numbers. This is turning into endemic, and we need to let these children have their childhood back. Thank you.
Okay, I believe that's all.
Sorry, Mr. Brophy. Before we move to board comment, given the email that we just received, I had a question for Mr. Saltanek, if I can ask it, if that's okay with you.
Yeah.
Okay. So I just, is it, it's okay? I'm assuming to read a small part of this email? That's okay? Okay. So Perk Valley just got an injunction, basically saying that they need to reinstate their mask mandate beginning tomorrow through February 8th. And it says, "Therefore, all students, staff, and visitors are required to wear masks when in our school buildings or as part of extracurricular activities, participating, or spectating." So what my question is, is if we were to, if someone were to take action against us, right now, we are not requiring, like, basketball players while they're playing, or wrestlers while they're wrestling, to wear masks. But if this were to be put in, if something similar were to be put in place for our district, then we would have to require them. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. First of all, there are three cases that are involved. There was misinformation. There's the Upper St. Clair case. There is the North Allegheny case. And now there is the Perkioman Valley case. All of those three cases dealt with decisions that are based on temporary restraining orders. So they are orders that are temporary until such time as the court has an opportunity to review that. I believe in the case of, it's either the North Allegheny or the Upper St. Clair case, that sometime this week or early next week, the Third Circuit Court of Appeals will be reviewing that temporary restraining order and making a determination. Temporary restraining orders are based upon the facts and circumstances of the case in question. We can't predict what a group of parents will bring in terms of a suit against the district, which will dictate what relief an individual court would fashion for the school district. So drawing any kind of conclusion as to what happened in Perkioman Valley, Upper St. Clair, or North Allegheny, to Borde Town is probably not a good way to analyze the situation. And a court's going to be looking at the specific facts involving the case. So for example, if this was brought by a group of special needs parents, and there were no involved special needs parents in athletics or sports that were involved, a court could custom tailor their temporary restraining order to address that issue. So trying to draw precise connections to that issue is probably not the best way to analyze this issue. So very difficult to predict under the circumstances. And as you're probably aware, we represent Perkioman Valley, so, you know, we're aware of the situation in Perkioman Valley. But the facts and circumstances in PB may not be analogous to Boyertown. But it does appear now that there are three temporary restraining orders that give credence to the Section 504 ADA theory for fragile students. But we may get more direction from the higher Third Circuit Court of Appeals within the next week.
Thank you, Mr. Saltanek. I appreciate it.
I'd like now to move to board comments. Let's start with Ms. Nyman.
First of all, I would like to publicly apologize to Mr. Hauck, one of the applicants for our recent school board vacancy. The night we interviewed the candidates, I said that he had not mentioned the children in his interview. In fact, he did mention our students in some of his answers. So I want to publicly apologize to Mr. Hauck. He does have students. He has some athletic parts on that. I want to apologize. I am trying to undo some harm that I may have caused his reputation, and I did not mean to do that. That being said, though, I want to go. And I did talk with Mrs. Torsa tonight. I did have a parent contact me that has been trying to get a mask removed from her child. Mrs. Torsa knows about it. It's been going on for several weeks now. So it is happening to our students here. And I am definitely concerned when a doctor recommends something, that we address that immediately and go by that doctor, because that is a healthcare worker. Doesn't need a nurse to say no to it. Doesn't need a principal to say no to it. It's a doctor putting a recommendation out. So we really need to work on that. Thank you, Mrs. Torsa, for helping me tonight. I know she's going to be in touch with you tomorrow, and hopefully, we can get this resolved ASAP. Thank you.
Mr. Draper-Groth. Ms. Sogun.
Thank you, Mr. Brophy. I'll be brief. So we're in the end of January, kind of the halfway point between the beginning of the year and the end of the year. So I just wanted to take a moment just to say thank you again to all of our teachers, our support staff, the bus drivers, our administrators, and especially to our nurses, who have just worked so hard this year, and I appreciate that so much. Congratulations to the seniors and our senior spotlight. It's always great to hear about our amazing students. Thank you to Sarah and Olivia, who always do such a great job. Thank you. And thank you to the foundation and the administration for the wonderful gifts. I appreciate them. Thank you so much. And that's all. Thanks.
Ms. Scott.
I think Lisa about covered all the thank yous for everything, but I did appreciate the board meeting tonight, and I'm glad that we actually made some headway and got through some tough things. Thank you.
Ms. Dero.
I think Lisa took all the thank yous from everybody. However, I have one question. Mrs. Torsa, are we still receiving a right-to-know request?
I don't believe that Mrs. Kramer has received any additional.
No, last time I asked, we were at 71.
Yes, there were more that was received since that.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Zawal.
Back to those quick right-to-nos. So just to get it on the record, basically, we as a board now can basically go public with that. Am I correct?
You may. It's a public action to file a right-to-know request. And actually, somebody can file a right-to-know request to find out how many right-to-know requests we have.
Thank you, sir. I want to thank everybody tonight for their thoughts and their ideas. I know there's a lot that came out from everybody, but it was great to see us all try to work and get together. There was a lot of research that was done. And so, again, I'm thankful for the way the board worked tonight. I also appreciate Lisa, everything you said about the thank yous. I just want to let the students know that I'm really going to enjoy the glass. It may, depending on what we fill it with.
Mr. Baderella.
I want to congratulate the kids from the senior spotlight. That's pretty cool. Thanks, Sarah and Olivia, for coming out. They did a great job. And to thank our recently resigned head football coach for everything he did for the football team over the past five seasons. If you didn't know, Coach Millers resigned. So I want to thank him.
Mr. Rammingway.
All right, I'll try to be brief, too, because it is getting late. And I can't believe that we just spent over an hour and a half as a board designing a health and safety plan. I don't think that's really the purpose of what a board's to do. We're so far in the weeds anymore that before you know it, we're going to be deciding what we're making for lunch. It was refreshing, now, to see the conversation that we all had. I think everybody played pretty fair, for the most part. But really, if we keep these kind of actions up as a board, we're not going to get a lot done. So I'm hoping that we can get this COVID, you know, out of the way so we can start again concentrating on things that, you know, a board's supposed to be doing. It's obvious, we've seen, the numbers are starting to come down. We've heard, you know, this is the, you know, the endemic. The plan that Ms. Torsa and her staff put together has been working. It's been consistent. It has an exit plan, four masks optional. And as you can see, it's on its way there. I just was, you know, hoping that we could, I know it's been two years we here, but, you know, it's a good plan. The plan needs to be finished. Let those numbers come down, and I think we're going to be where we would be anyway. So that's basically all I have.
I have nothing at this time. Mr. Draper-Groth.
I have a question for, like, the administrator. Well, first of all, I want to thank the tech department for making these up. You know, it's very good, and I will definitely use mine. The other question I had for administration, has administration ever, Mr. Foley, or anybody ever polled the senior high kids or the middle school kids about how they felt about the masks? Has that ever been done? Has that ever been done?
Olivia and I made a report on it earlier in the year, that was the first student-led luncheon we held, we talked about masks, kind of covered how students already felt about it, so since then, we have moved on from it.
I, I understand that, you said that was in the early of the year, but have you ever done anything lately?
Since we got student opinions on it, and we're kind of in the same situation, we didn't feel it was necessary to talk about masks again, we're trying to move forward to different topics, so we have not, no.
Well, I think it'd be very important to start polling your classmates on how they felt about the mask situation.
Okay, that ends the board comments section. Ms. Torsa?
Upcoming meeting dates, we have, our next meeting will be February 8th, Committee at the Hall, here at the Ed Center, February 27th, March 8th, and March 22nd are our next meetings, respectfully. Please do keep in mind that this is budget season, so these dates could continue to build up, you could have additional dates in your calendar. Sorry, Mr. P., I was-
Okay, call for adjournment?